So I was just asking you what the name of our contact, government contact is over there. It's the Edison.
Oh, that's right, Kobe Will.
All right. Morning, everybody. Today's Tuesday, December fifth, two thousand twenty-three. We're here for regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Time is nine a.m. Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboen.
Here.
Rusty Robinson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Here.
Thank you. Next is invocation from Pastor Arthur Fox of the New Hope Orthodox Presbyterian Church. Please stand if you'd like. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm gonna read from Ecclesiastes, chapter three. For everything there is a season, and a time for every matter under heaven, a time to be born, and a time to die, a time to plant, and a time to pluck up what is planted, a time to kill, and a time to heal, a time to break down, and a time to build up, a time to weep, and a time to laugh, a time to mourn, and a time to dance, a time to cast away stones, and a time to gather stones together, a time to embrace, and a time to refrain from embracing, a time to seek, and a time to lose, a time to keep, and a time to cast away, and a time to tear, a tear, and a time to sow, a time to keep silence, and a time to speak, a time to love, and a time to hate, a time for war, and a time for peace, for all living in times when we have no control over our day of our birth, no control over the time of our death. But what is certain is one day we will face God and answer for the way we've lived our lives. And I plead with you to seek a way through Jesus Christ to be right with Him, that when He calls you into His presence, you will be right with Him. Let us pray. Almighty God, you are mighty and powerful. We thank you for this peace of heaven called Hanford, where people are responsible, where the leaders are men and women who care very much about the community and about their neighbors. We pray for this board. They would have wisdom as to make decisions of consequence. We pray this meeting will go well. We pray you resolve all of the difficulties that are going on in our community. We also pray, oh Lord, you would awaken us, to call upon you to save us from the horrors of the taze that we live in, and you would change the hearts of men, and that we might not see so many things happening that don't seem right to us. Give wisdom then to these leaders. Help them to do right on your side, and bless them for their faithful service. In Jesus' name, amen.
Okay, thank you, Pastor. Appreciate you.
Absolutely, John. That's the following week's vote of allegiance. This is the one I've been hiding, saving America into the public sands, with my nation under God, in the middle of it all.
All right, that takes us, before we get going today, we're gonna have a recognition, employee recognition. Ms. CEO, you wanna kick it off?
Yes, the board approved the formation of the Employee Recognition Committee in nineteen ninety. Every quarter employees are nominated based on their outstanding performance and achievement in various departments. The nominations are received and voted upon by the committee, and the committee respect requests that the board recognize and award the employee of the quarter with the presentation of certificate and a check in the amount of three hundred, which will come from general fund. And at this time, I will pass it over to Wendy.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. I'm really excited to be here today. I want to thank the Employee Recognition Committee for their selection. Today, to this quarter's employee, the quarter is Amber T- oh, geez, I'm gonna match it up, Amber. Say it. Suchira. I was just Amber. I don't have to dig into the last name. Amber was hired with the county November two thousand eighteen and as a staff support specialist. And she then subsequently promoted to staff support specialist two. During her time with the county, she has displayed exceptional leadership and worked out there during a really transitional period. She's had to train and onboard her peers, as well as a new manager over her program. As a result, she had a higher workload in addition to that training. We also had COVID going on, and so she led in the processing of over six hundred COVID sick leaves and well over a thousand quarantine and exposure letters for our department. In addition, she's on-boarded our staff, and so that involves talking with them, making job offers, all the paperwork to get them hired, well over, close to a hundred and fifty employees, processing and tracking of over seven hundred evaluations, over two hundred and sixty position requests all flow through her desk. She's, she has assumed a lead role when we don't have a lead position, and provided the training guidance and even developed some processes, documented processes, so staff know how to proceed. She has really helped her peers thrive in their role. She understands and really exhibits, you know, our, our vision of together we serve. She's a team player. She never complains about the, the new assignment or the extra work that's given to her. And, and we really felt that she's a part of, of making the staff support team a, a true team that works, works well and coordinates their work. She works long and stressful hours to meet the deadlines of our department while displaying loyalty, humility, dedication, and commitment. Never received one complaint about her, and every single employee has probably interacted with Amber over her time with our department. She's a dedicated employee that's valued by our office, valued by our entire department. And for these reasons, she was nominated by her manager, who wants to give that couple, couple words before we recommend.
Nice. Good morning, members of the board.
Good morning.
My name is Anthony Valdez, the staff support manager. And I started a little over a year ago in my position. And some of the things that Wendy was mentioning was me, you know, she helped to train me as I'm her manager, but she was helping train me. Gee, we had all new staff. And what really led to my nomination was that she really displayed our core values for human services, the ideal core values, which is integrity, dignity, excellence, accountability, and leadership. And with the integrity part, like she always stood up for what was right. And employees would come in with complaints or, hey, I don't think this is right, and, or whatever the case was. And Amber was, she just, she knows the processes and our policies, and she knows all that stuff really well. And so she was able to be, stick up for employees with that integrity part. Excellence, again, the excellence part is she always wanted to do what was right. And she always, she took very good pride in her work and wanted, always wanted to put out a good product. And in the leadership part of it, again, she, she stepped up in a time of need. And it's, the staff support office is small. We have a small staff, and so when we're down people, it's hard. It's a lot of work that goes through there, and she did what it took. She, she worked long, hard hours. She mentored myself and our new staff members, and just, I think the rest of the agency probably didn't even, wouldn't be able to tell that we were short-staffed. So those are the things that led to my nomination. I couldn't be proud, more proud of my team and Amber, so, thank you.
All right. All right, Amber, congratulations on behalf of the board. We have a certificate that will go good, guaranteed to be with family early. So if we could have everyone stand and we'll get, get a picture with the board that presents you with sort of passion. And you can buy a note for everybody.
Kings County. Kings have also the, is that okay?
Worth the flowers in there, too?
I'm sorry, expensive.
Good job.
First take.
Is there anything that you'd like to say, Amber? I know no one asked if you wanted to speak.
Well, those were very wonderful and flattering things to hear from my bosses. I really appreciate it. I appreciate being nominated in a county where people do such amazing work to help our community every day. And so I'm just humbled, and thank you.
Good work.
Thank you, thank you, Amber.
All right, next up is unscheduled appearances. It's time for anyone to address the board at the time, and we'll go first to any speaker cards or anyone online. Madam Clerk?
I have no written correspondence, no speaker cards, and it doesn't appear anyone online has their hand raised.
Okay, thank you. Anyone in the chambers that would like to make an unscheduled appearance? Now's the time. Seeing none, going once, going twice. All right, we will move on. Next item's approval of the minutes. Item A is report out a closed session from the regular meeting for November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Counsel, you got anything?
There's nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Okay. Item B is approval of the minutes from the regular, regular meeting for November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Chair, intent motion, Sue Robinson, I guess Sue, Sue Fagundes on the second. Madam Clerk?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Passes five in favor. Consent calendar, we have a few items on there. Publicly listed on the agenda. There are no questions or comments this time. The chair will entertain a motion.
Go move.
Second.
Motion by Fagundes, second by Verboen. Madam Clerk?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Consent passes five in favor. That takes us to regular agenda items. First one comes from the IT department. Good morning, Mr. Devlin.
Good morning. Chris Vierge was going to present on this. However, we have something that might be emerging, so he had to go take care of it. I found out minutes before the meeting, so.
What is it? Don't leave us in suspense.
It's nothing to do with computers and security. I'll leave it at that. But we're not sure if it's, what's going on yet, so he's gonna go to investigate. Anyhow, what we have before you is a service agreement for a product called Cortex by Palo Alto. Kings County currently uses Trelix, which was known as McAfee, that's much more known, for endpoint antivirus protection, and that agreement expires March third. IT proposes a new one-year agreement with Palo Alto's Cortex. Normally, we do a three-year to try to save a little money, but we wanted to just make sure we like it first. And then if we go to renew it a year, we'll do, we'll try the three-year. Anyway, it has what they call XDR, which is Extended Detection and Response. And it doesn't just look at just the computer that it's on like McAfee did. It actually looks at things coming in from the outside. It also ties in with our firewall, which is also Palo Alto, so it can kind of triage and know exactly where these little problems are coming into the county. So it's a much more robust solution. The fiscal impact is a hundred and four thousand five hundred and ninety, and it has been included in our budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four for the first year, and of course, for any subsequent year, we'll also budget it. The Palo Alto Cortex XDR solution pulls together information from network, endpoint, and cloud, giving IT a three hundred and sixty-degree view of the security landscape. Cortex XDR's ability to integrate with hundreds of external solutions will allow IT to eliminate more blind spots than before. Former product was just a standalone unit, didn't integrate with other pieces. It allows for swift action when threats are detected. It'll actually warn us, as well as enforce drive encryption on county workstations all through a single agent. The agreement has been reviewed and approved by county council as deformed. However, risk management cannot endorse the insurance policy until the county has been added to the policy. The vendor has the insurance that is adequate types and limits. However, they won't add the county until the purchase is complete. We've had another one that was like this recently. I think because it's just sort of how they're doing business now, a lot of these companies. Anyway, I'm here for any questions you might have.
Anything from the board?
No.
All right. Chair, intent motion. Go move. Motion by Fagundes.
Second.
Second by Verboen. Madam Clerk?
Joe Nevs.
Uh, yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item B on regular agenda comes from Public Works. Good morning, Mr. Tiberisky.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dominic Tiberisky, Public Works Department. I am here before you this morning to request authorization for the chairman to sign the consultant services agreement with Odell Engineering Incorporated for the Kings County Highway Safety Improvement Program, HCP Cycle eleven. County Public Works submitted three HCP applications and was awarded funding for one application. This project includes left-turn lanes on Excelsior Avenue at Eleventh and One and a Quarter. Also includes systemic roadway safety improvements, which entails flashing beacons at stop-controlled intersections and also flashing beacons at the advanced stop warning. Those intersections will be Grangeville at Seventh, Idaho at Seventeenth, Jersey at Nineteenth, Jackson at Fourteenth. The funding is federally provided at a rate of ninety percent. Kings County Road Fund makes up the difference of ten percent, so ten cents on the dollar is not bad. Unfortunately, the two failed applications were both roundabouts, one at Jackson and Fourteenth, one at Jersey and Nineteenth. Project locations were selected based on accident data and knowledge of historical challenges. Once locations were selected, countermeasures were analyzed to provide the greatest cost-benefit ratio per HCP guidelines, which included significant analysis by county staff and our consultant to develop the scope for these projects, which will provide invaluable safety enhancements for the neighborhood in public. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Hey, Dominic, who recommended the roundabouts? Is it Caltrans or the county?
No, so it's part of the HCP program, which is Highway Safety Improvement. It's all geared towards safety improvement. So we look at the intersections that would qualify for those funds, and then you balance that with the countermeasures. So it, it's based on the types of collisions, which, you know, the countermeasures then are paired up with the, the accident data and historical information to come up with the best solution, which provides a cost-benefit ratio, and that's how the projects are awarded, you know, because we were competing for those funds against other agencies, and it's all comes down to the cost benefit.
Got it. Thank you, sir. Any questions from the board?
We're broke.
We have most of our candidates and a question by Robinson.
So is it correct with the roundabouts that basically it doesn't diminish the number of accidents, but it, but they do it at a lower rate of speed? Is that, is that right?
So the, the primary benefit of a roundabout is it, I mean, there are no absolutes, but it almost eliminates fatalities because the, the most common fatality is the right angle collision, the T-bone. So when you have a roundabout, it eliminates those right angle collisions. So it's mostly property damage, you know, you're hitting at a much slighter angle, it blinks and blows. So it, it minimizes fatalities and injuries, so that's the benefit of the roundabout. It also provides some air pollution benefits, because you're able to continue moving instead of an all-way, you know, stop control, which everybody's stopping and accelerating, which increases, you know, exhaust, so.
So Jersey and Nineteenth, that didn't seem like it would travel rogue. Like out in the middle of nowhere. It would have a lot of accidents up there?
Uh, enough to warrant submitting it as part of an HCP application, but at the same time, you know, it was unsuccessful in, in the securing of the funding. But again, it's based on an overall score. So, you know, a score that might fail this time might pass next time, just depending on the other agency.
Joe liked roundabouts. Well, I'll tell you, there's fences on three of the four corners on that intersection, and, and three of the fences are all down.
Really?
Yeah, and they all happen.
Yeah, cuz I, I guess.
And it's pretty wide open, but there, there are fences on three of the four corners, and right now you'll see damage on all three.
Wow, okay. It's four-way stop right now, right?
No, two-way.
It's two-way.
Nineteenth stops. Jersey's a thoroughfare, and I think sometimes the traffic down Jersey is what's.
People escaping the palace?
You're either, you're happy to get there, or you're happy, or you're mad when you leave. I don't know. It's which, which one? Yeah, it's many emotions.
Okay. Okay, we have most of our candidates, second by Verboen. Madam Clerk?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Dominic, when do you expect it to be installed?
Well, this is the contract for the design consultant.
Correct.
That should take nine months to a year to complete the design, get all the approvals, plan approvals, so probably the next eighteen months. So it's about eighteen months out.
Well, like I say, there's, you know, three property owners out there that would like to see it happen sooner than later. So if we could at least get the signalization, yeah, I mean, the solar, solar stoplights, stop sign.
There's some we could certainly, that's good.
Yeah, you know, and at least that part of it. And then the rest of it, the stop ahead, and maybe sometimes those beacon, I mean, the little bumpers on the road makes a little noise, but I think the, the property owners are, would rather hear that than the crash go through their fence.
Sure, absolutely. No, we'll, we'll absolutely work on it, but I don't know portion.
How soon? Well, are we, how far from, are we from cell phone alert as you're driving? Notify you. I think it there. Do they know where you're at most of the time?
That's a great question. I'd have to look into it and get back to you.
I think, I think the technology's gonna come where you get accident avoidance, you know. The vehicles now, you don't even have to hold on the steering wheel. So, maybe someday.
Hey, thank you, Dominic. Appreciate you. Item passes five in favor. Next item, got a couple from admin. Hey, good morning, Ms. Boye.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Matthew Boye, Deputy County Administrative Officer, Kings County Administration. So back in two thousand eight, the state of California took over fifty-eight point zero one percent of county property in Avonale located at five oh one East Kings Street. This was due to the transition into the trial court reorganization that the state did back in two thousand eight. And so with that, the state established the Avonale Courthouse within their fifty-eight point zero one percent interest in that building. So the county still maintains forty-one point ninety-nine percent interest in that building and location, which we currently have the Avonale Branch Library operating out of there. And so during the pandemic, the state actually approached the county to see if the county was interested in purchasing the state's interest in that building. But, you know, due to the delays of the pandemic and staffing changes, you know, that kind of, you know, didn't progress any further at that point in time. But recently, the state reapproached the county again to inquire as to the county's interest in purchasing the state's share of the Avonale Courthouse there. And so the state and county negotiated a price of roughly two hundred and twelve thousand dollars for the fifty-eight point zero one percent of the state's interest in that building, which will be paid for out of the general fund contingencies within the current budget. So before your board this morning, you have three documents for approval. You'll have, obviously, you have the sale and purchase agreement there, and you also have the grant deed, which will essentially transfer the state's ownership of the three parcels to the county, and those parcels, for the record. They, all three parcels have the same book and page number of zero four zero one six five, and then the parcel numbers are zero zero seven, zero eleven, and zero twelve. And then the last document before you this morning is the termination of the joint occupancy, which essentially terminates the state's rights and obligations to the property there. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments?
A long time coming. I'll move approval as presented.
Second.
All right, we got a motion by Verboen, by Verboen, second by Fagundes. And I just want to put on the record without giving away closed session, that, if it's okay, we just say a lot of thought went into the many options for this building. The county worked very closely with the city of Avonale over time for consideration with those city officials on what could be best for the city of Avonale as well. And so this isn't just the county making a decision today blindly. I think we talked about this for what, like three years?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But now we don't have to, we can make a decision without involving anybody else.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Now, we got to a good point here, so. We got our motions and our seconds. Madam Clerk?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Good work to everyone involved. I know there's a lot of work and, and a lot of help to, to get a good price here, too, working with Chris Comm as well and, and our county staff, and so good work. You have another item?
I do, yes, sir. So my second item is for a resolution this morning in regards to some, establishing some alternative office hours here for the county. So June twentieth of this current year, your board approved temporary alternative public office hours to accommodate departments and staff participating in a nine-eighty summer pilot flex schedule program, where essentially staff work nine-hour days Monday through Thursday, and they work four-hour days every Friday, and they essentially get off at noon. So in order to accommodate this schedule, new temporary public office hours were set to be eight to five Monday through Thursday and eight to noon on Friday. And those temporary alternative hours for those departments participating in the nine-eighty schedule were effective June twenty-sixth of this year, and they were slated to end on September third of the. third of this year. So, towards the end of that initial pilot program, staff and department heads were surveyed to kind of evaluate and get a feel for the impacts of what the office hours and the new scheduling had on the public, the employees, and our overall operations, and of which those, that yielded overwhelmingly positive results, and so as such, the nine-eighty pilot program and the alternative office hours for the departments participating, that was extended through December twenty-fourth of this year. And so recently, a second survey was done to see, you know, how things were going, to see, see if there were any changes, but once again, the evaluation yielded overwhelmingly positive results from both staff and department heads, and so as such, before you this morning is a resolution to make this a permanent alternate option for the public. So, what the resolution will do is it will permanently set this alternative schedule for office hours for the public, for eight to five Monday through Thursday, and eight to noon on Friday, and to be very clear, this is only for the departments that are participating in the nine-eighty flex schedule, so those departments that are not, and that are opting to still operate in the traditional eight to five Monday through Friday, their offices will remain open in the traditional eight to five Monday through Friday, so this is, again, only for those departments participating in the nine-eighty flex schedule. So, with that, that concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, any questions or comments? C. Robinson.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by, uh, motion by Robinson, second by Verboon, Madam Clerk.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good work. Good work, okay, that takes us to a study session this morning, it's going to come from human resources. Good morning, Carolyn.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board, Carolyn, I'm the Human Resources Director, I'm here today with Sean Baker, who's with Mission Square Retirement, he'll be presenting some information today regarding the Vantage Care Retirement Option for the Health Savings Plan. I had brought it to the board, and you guys had recommended that we bring it to you, and you know, open session, and I think, as such, I invited all the department heads to attend, as well as all of the associations, so I hope we have good participation today, and I hope we have time for questions that you might have, because this is a lot of information to present, but I want to go ahead and, Danielle, oh, look at her, she's so great, she's already got it shared and ready to go, so I will go ahead and just let him jump in and walk me.
Thank you, Carolyn. Good morning. Again, my name is Sean Baker, I'm the Regional Vice President for Mission Square Retirement, I just want to start by saying thank you very much for this opportunity to stand here today, I also want to say thank you very much for entrusting Mission Square Retirement, as you know, we administer the four fifty-seven plan for the county, and we sincerely appreciate the opportunity and the partnership that we've had over these last several years, so again, we sincerely apologize, or apologize, appreciate, I don't get the chance to talk to board of supervisors that often, so I apologize if I get a little nervous every once in a while.
Ah, you're doing good.
Um, what we're here to talk today about is the Vantage Care Retiree Health Savings Plan. Danielle, if you could go to the next slide, as I'm sure all of you are aware, healthcare, healthcare costs are rising, they're rising quite a bit, I want to say, we just went through open enrollment, Mission Square Retirement, our costs went up, I want to say about twelve percent this year, so unfortunately, costs are really not under control. When it comes to retirement and saving for retirement, or paying for your healthcare costs at retirement, Danielle, if you could go to the next slide, please, a lot of times folks focus on Medicare, well, Medicare is not available prior to age sixty-five, and it's not really necessarily important to know what Medicare covers, but as I like to say, it's really more important to consider what Medicare doesn't cover, you know, Medicare does not cover a lot of dental, hearing, vision, long-term care expenses, so what we end up with, Danielle, on the next slide, what we end up with is a gap, depending upon which study you look at, or which study you follow, it's probably going to take well over three hundred thousand that an individual needs to save or set aside just to address their healthcare costs at retirement. Now, some, a lot of times, through the county or whatever, you might have some kind of retiree health savings, or some kind of support in retirement to help, to help pay for your costs, you might have some outside sources, as well as Medicare, but in general, we're looking at upwards of about a hundred thousand dollar gap, so the question is, where do we, where do you pay for that gap, or how does that gap get funded? So Danielle, if we go to the next slide, that's really what the Retiree Health Savings Plan is, in the year two thousand, Mission Square went to the IRS and said, look, we want to put together a plan solely for the public sector, so only cities, counties, municipalities, governmental instruments have the ability to save in something like the Retiree Health Savings Plan. It's a way for you to save today to help pay for those costs at retirement, as we're going through it, it might look very similar to a flex savings account, and it is, in a lot of respects, it is similar to a flexible spending account, however, the flexible spending account is for your costs today, so the Retiree Health Savings Plan is basically for the costs tomorrow, so you're saving today to pay for those costs tomorrow or in retirement. The program is also, although it is funded by the employer, by the individual, it's also not only good for you, but it's also good for your spouse, and also your dependents, and a dependent could be, you know, could be elderly parent, could be a child, basically somebody that's depending on you, or dependent upon you. In addition to that, the Retiree Health Savings Plan, or the RHS Plan, as we call it for short, there are a number of tax advantages to it, it is basically a triple tax-free program, so that the funds that go into the program are pre-tax, so you're not paying the tax on those monies just upfront, so if you're familiar with the four fifty-seven plan, exactly the same way, if we're putting in a hundred bucks, a hundred goes in, but I am, I might only see sixty-five or seventy less, because I'm not paying that upfront tax burden on the funds. In addition to that, any of the funds that you earn, as the, it is an investment account, we'll go through the investments as well, but it is an investment account, so anything that you earn inside of the account continues to accumulate as well on a tax-deferred basis. Again, I'm, I'm just using the four fifty-seven plan to kind of balance it out, same thing with four fifty-seven or 401K, anything you put in continues to earn on a tax-deferred basis, and then finally, the funds in the account, they have to be used for healthcare-related expenses, you get the money tax-free as you pull the money out, so as I like to say, money in, money earned, as well as money out, are all on a tax-free basis. Now, the program is sponsored by Mission Square Retirement, we do work with you, the employer, to put the program together, because this is an, this is an employer-sponsored program, this is not an individual account, it is something or a benefit that would be offered through the county. So Danielle, if we go to the next slide, as a high level, how the program works, we talked a little bit about the contributions, there is no individual choice on the RHS Plan, one of the reasons the IRS allows us to have that triple tax-free benefit is that everything has to be structured upfront, so through the collective bargaining process or whatever, and I'll talk a little bit more about that, the contribution levels, or the contributions are set upfront, so you, as the employer, through Human Resources and the board, you help determine who contributes and at what level. As I indicated a little bit before, this is an investment account, very similar to a four fifty-seven, four oh one, you determine who contributes, at what level they contribute, the money goes in, and then I, as an individual, if I was a county employee, I get to choose my investment option, so, we would in essence mirror the investments on the four fifty-seven plan in the RHS Plan, kind of give individuals that continuity and familiarity, so you, so folks would be, again, familiar with the investments, but I would get to control, so if I'm a more aggressive individual, a little further away from retirement, I could invest a little more aggressively, I'm a little closer to retirement, I want to be a little more conservative, I could be, invest a little bit more conservatively. This is also a reimbursement account, so, I always like to let different groups, when I make this presentation, again, this is not health insurance, I'm not telling you to get Health Net, or Kaiser, or whatever, I'm, I really am ambivalent to what health insurance you have in retirement, this is a way to help pay for it, so as a result, it is a reimbursement account, so, if I'm paying for my premiums, or my out-of-pocket costs, or whatever, tho- those kinds of expenses, I would in essence pay for those, and then get reimbursed through the, reimbursed from the program on a tax-free basis. Then finally, unfortunately, if something were to happen, and there are funds left in the account, the nice thing about the RHS Plan is that the funds do go to your dependents on a tax-free basis as well. Now, with the dependents, if something were to happen, I always like to use myself as an example, so I'm married, I have two children, if I have an RHS account, and something were to happen to me, it's not as though my funds go to my wife and kids, a third, a third, a third, for argument's sake, basically, if I had twenty thousand dollars in there, my family gets the twenty thousand dollars, and if my daughter disproportionately uses more, that's fine, or my son uses more, that's fine, it's just my dependents, and, you know, my direct heirs, they get to use the money as they fit, see fit, on a tax-free basis, again, to help pay for their, pay for their expenses. Danielle, if we could go to the next slide, are there any questions so far at this point?
So, if, if.
Sir.
Nobody use, you passed away, and your family passed away later, but nobody uses, where does that money go, stays in the RHS system?
I- if you do not have any dependents, it, it does go back.
Nobody, even if your dependents don't use it, because some people don't have any health issues, they just pass away early, or whatever.
Right, they're, very similar to a pension plan, basically, if you have no dependents or heirs, the money would revert back to the pool.
Okay.
So, when it comes to the contributions, again, as I had indicated a little bit, as I had indicated a little bit earlier, this can be a county-wide program, covering all employees, or you can work with the individual bargaining units, the contribution matrix, I was working with Human Resources, the covered group, that would be determined through the meet-and-confer process. In general, the grouping that, the way you do it, would have, they would have to have something in common, so I like to pick on police and fire, so we have the Sheriff's Department, excuse me, so we have the Sheriff's deputies, so they would be a covered group, or a collectively bargained group, or the firefighters would be a collectively bargained group, again, it could be a county-wide thing, it could be, it can be, or through the individual bargaining units. Once you establish the groups, though, then at that point, you would work with the groups to determine how the contributions were to be made, the contributions could be made, or funded solely by the, you know, can be funded by the county, they can be funded exclusively by the individual group, or they can be some kind of matrix, or some kind of formula between the two groups. Any questions on that? Okay. Danielle, next one, please. Again, I just want to stress, one of the benefits of the RHS Plan, again, the contributions that go in, it does not matter if, you know, it's an employer contribution, or employee contribution, or some mix thereof, again, all contributions made to the RHS Plan automatically go in on a pre-tax basis, you can invest, again, it doesn't matter if you're conservative, or aggressive, or somewhere in between, any of those funds, or any of those earnings that you have in the account, again, they do grow tax-deferred, and then finally, once I retire from the county, and I go about paying for my healthcare retirement, I would be able to be reimbursed from the program on a tax-free basis, and one other note on the tax-free withdrawals, it does, again, have to be used for healthcare-related expenses, there is no cash alternative, okay, so I do want to, I do want to make sure that I point that out, if there were a cash alternative, the IRS, again, would not allow the tax-free, or a tax-free benefit of it, so that's why it is restricted to healthcare-related expenses. Danielle, again, what we would plan on doing is, I, you know, I'm putting in fifty bucks a check, or whatever, the money that would go in, we would look to mirror the four fifty-seven plan at the county, again, for the familiarity, same thing that you would have in the four fifty-seven, or your own personal form, you can mix-match, make changes whenever you see fit, so the nice thing is, it's a completely open investment platform within, you know, within whatever the county offers, so that individuals do have the ability to move and, make moves and changes to their account. In addition, we are on-site on a regular basis, we have a representative that comes to the county on a monthly basis, you know, as your employees come and sit down, and they say, hey, I want to sit down and talk about my four fifty-seven plan, you know, Brian or Sean, can you help me out, let's talk about your RHS Plan as well, so we offer the same kind of support services as well for the RHS Plan that we do for the four fifty-seven Plan. And then again, Danielle, on the next slide, with regards to withdrawals, I had talked a little bit about what would happen upon your death, however, also, if I retire, again, I'm married, let's say my children are dependents when I retire, the nice thing about it is that, even though I retired from the county, even though my family is also, you know, even though I, good news is, I'm still alive, and hopefully, I'm going to have a good, long retirement, my family can also use the funds on a tax-free basis. Now, somebody asked a question, what if I don't really have a lot of expenses, well, I'm a, I'm very fortunate in that respect, again, I'm going to use myself as an example, my wife is a, a schoolteacher, and we do have some retiree healthcare, health insurance when Anna retires, but we still have those out-of-pocket costs, so if, if my wife goes to the doctor, and she has to get a prescription filled over a Kaiser, costs twenty bucks, we could still get that filled, even though it was her prescription, or my son, or my daughter, so it's, again, upon separation from service, the funds are available to me, but they're not only available to me, but they're also available to my dependents, my spouse is automatically dependent, in my example, my children are still my dependents as well, because they're, they're younger, so it's not only good for me, but it's also good for my dependents. I can use it for my premiums, that's probably the number one thing that people use it for, is you can use it for your, you know, health insurance premiums, you can use it for your dental premiums, vision premiums, you can also use it for long-term care premiums, however, I always like to say, you can use it for the long-term care premiums, but you cannot use it for direct long-term care costs, the IRS basically considers that room and board, so, if I go into a facility, and the facility costs me three thousand dollars a month, the room and board portion, I can't use it for that, but if a doctor comes to see me, I can use it to pay for my doctor visit, but I, and also, again, you can use it to pay for your long-term care premiums.
What separates the two?
Uh, well, if I bought a long-term care policy for myself and my wife, and I, and I've retired, again, you have to separate from service to use the funds, let's say it costs me three hundred dollars a month, I can pay for that long-term care policy.
You're in a post-acute care situation, if you had a stroke, you can't take care yourself, but they won't cover that facility?
Correct, that's considered long-term care, that's considered room and board, however, if you're in the facility, doctors come, and so forth.
The services that provided are covered.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yep. And then, in addition to that, we, we talked about the out-of-pocket expenses, you know, use insurance premiums, you know, flywear glasses, if I need to get glasses, whatever, those things are eligible to be covered as well, then in addition to that, if you, you know, purchase Medicare Additional B, or even Part D, that's also eligible to be reimbursed. And just one last reminder, this is not, again, not health insurance, this is a reimbursement program, so individuals would save, then they would use the money as they see fit, and then be reimbursed on a tax-free basis as well. Danielle, if you go to the next slide, we do have some online resources, hopefully, I don't know if the supervisors are eligible, hopefully, you're all saving in the four fifty-seven plan, if not, I hope you're saving in your own 401Ks and so forth, but please, check out our website, we have some excellent additional resources on the website, I'm also available if you have any additional questions after today's meeting, and, and again, Danielle, if you just want to go to the last slide, again, sincerely, on behalf of Mission Square Retirement, we sincerely appreciate the opportunity to work with the county, look forward to working with you in the years to come, are there any questions?
Good job, good presentation, any questions from the board?
Nope.
Direction, Eva, what are you looking for?
If we could, we can have access our HR department to, for further information.
Yes. Oh, actually, you know what, and one other thing, I did, I do apologize, there's one more slide, Danielle, we talked about covered groups and so forth, I should say in the last page of your handouts, it, it just looks like this, if you have any questions about what a group looks like and so forth, these are some real-life examples from employers that we've used with regards to how they've structured their program.
One of the things that wasn't quite mentioned, but I, I do think it's worth mentioning, too, is, you know, when it comes to the contributions, there's different ways you can contribute, it doesn't have to be a monetary contribution, meaning that you don't have to just put fifty dollars a pay period into it, there's other flexibility, so for example, in some of the groups that they've worked with, they've decided to use, let's say their vacation caps are at three fifty, anything at the end of the fiscal year that's over three hundred gets cashed out automatically and put into the plans, so there's ways to use other ways to get the money into the account, besides just using a, a flat dollar rate every pay period, so, I think that's what makes it so great, is that you get to work with the bargaining groups to figure out what's best for them, if they choose to consider this program. So, we brought this before the board to get recommendation, one, just to provide an overview of the Vantage Care Retirement System, I know there was a lot of department heads, employees, and associations who have just said, look, you know, it's the retirement cost, that's what's really hard, you know, when you want to retire, you, you, you get to the fifty-five and think, okay, I can retire, but Medicare's not available till sixty-five, and so people work for their health insurance, and so these programs and things that can help to mitigate that, along with the deferred comp program that we have matches on, on some of the groups, so, these. So these things are just things that we think, hey, these might provide a great opportunity for, um, the employees. And so I wanted to make sure you guys had this information too. Go ahead.
I still have a question, so you're twenty-one years old, you're starting at the county, you know, forty years go by. You put money here a hundred dollars a month your whole entire career. Now, they had a problem because they invested poorly, they're not here anymore. What's the protection that we get our money back?
So these, um, investments are just like the deferred comp program, so when you put it in, it's their investment. So I don't know if there's, is there vesting on this one, like there is?
Is it insured if you guys fail?
Okay, um. Yes, there is a vet, there could be potentially be a vested-
I don't want to invest forty years, if there's no security that I, I'm going to get my return on my investment.
The funds are held in a trust specifically for the individual, individual and their dependents.
Okay.
At the end of the day, it is, it is an investment account, just like their 457 plan. Most of the investments are tied to the market, so you are, you know, over a forty-year period, you're going to go through the ups and downs.
I've been thinking of CalPERS and, you know, how everybody worked their whole career and then CalPERS makes a bad decision and, you know, they're insured, so they still get their investment, but it's just that-
It, it's, you, you're going to go through your ups and downs in the investment, so you're going to incur whatever investment gains or losses might happen over the career. But the funds are held separately, so i- if something were to happen, argument's sake to Mission Square requirement, then the funds would still be in the managed care retirement trust for the participant and their dependents. Where, in other words, we, it's not our funds, it's the individual's funds.
And correct if I'm wrong, if we're using our, um, same structure for our deferred compensation program, we have the target date funds, um, but we also have the Sagic fund, which is like almost more of a savings. So right now in the four fifty-seven compensation, deferred compensation program, if you're, let's say, um, twenty and you're in the target date fund that's for retirement, what is it, sixty-five, seventy, twenty, twenty-seven, twenty-seventy or something? It seems so far away, it's hard to kind of do the math real quick in my head. Um, but let's say you're in the twenty-seventy, um, target fund. As you get closer to retirement, you can always get out of those target date funds and move it into more of a secure, a Sagic fund, which is I think, um, we get up to a three percent return on investment and it doesn't go below zero, so you won't have losses.
And it's not taxed at that point either?
Uh, no, it's-
Okay.
Just similar to the deferred comp, which if you put it in pre-tax, then you're going to get taxed when you pull it out. This one has tax deferred on both sides.
When, when do you recommend that move? Like, are you talking seven years out, five years out?
When do I recommend what, sir?
Uh, the move that, um, Carolyn just spoke about as far as moving out of a retirement targeted to a more secure.
I'm going to be honest with you, sir, it's going to be up to the, it is an individual, it is an individual choice. Uh, as part of the support services, we would, we'll sit down with individuals, outline their options, tell them to, there's always positives and negatives to doing any, any kind of change. So our goal would be to educate them on, and then let them make the best decision that they feel for themselves.
I guess that, but on, on average, uh, is that usually a five-year?
It'd be five, around five years.
Five years away.
If you're fifty-five, you're planning on going on sixty.
That's when people start thinking about it, about five years out?
Uh, over, once you hit fifty, once you hit fifty, but yeah, when you get about five years out, that's probably when we get a lot of people coming in, oh, I'm five years out, am I doing the right thing? Do I need to make changes to my account? Yes, about five years out. And then one of the things that we're going to be doing this next year, and the same thing would hold true for the RHS plan as well, is we have the other support services in addition to myself, the local rep, CFPs. So we do have that support network in place again for the individuals to make the right decision for themselves.
Okay, appreciate it.
CFPs are certified, um, financial planners.
Certified, thank you, thank you. I get caught using short again, so.
And we just recently sent out a flyer from Human Resources, so hopefully everybody's seen the certified planners, um, that you can actually set schedule appointments and then based on how much money you have in your account, you might get free, um, services under that program too.
Uh, Carolyn, um, I know you're still going to go, uh, to the bargaining tables, but at this point, do this presentation, go out to all the employees, at least get a general overview of, um, what we talked about this morning.
It had not, it was only on the board agenda, um, I did send it to all the bargaining groups though, uh, all the associations, and I think I sent it to the department heads as well, I think. But I can, um, I can send it, um, county-wide as well. But I don't know if that might make them think it's an available resource when right now it's really up to the associations if we, uh, meet, if we're on it.
I understand that. Um, it's, Karen, at this time, um, while we open it up, uh, I, I see the sheriff might have some questions, some other folks, uh, the department heads in the room, um, so that's okay, Sheriff? Morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I appreciate the opportunity, thank you for opening it up. Um, first and foremost, let me just say that I started my planning about fifteen years ago. So I don't need this program, and I, I say that because, um, I submitted a proposal, you know, to the, uh, employee committee on dealing with retention and recruitment for health insurance in retirement. And one of the feedback I got was that it's just self-promoting for myself because I'm close to retirement, and that's just not true. I have-
And I'm going to retire?
Uh, I am going to retire, but I, I, I have everything set aside where I do not need this program. And so I don't need this program. I started fifteen years ago making sure I started putting money into deferred comp and saving sick time and all those things, I don't need this program. So I come from the perspective of, I just want to try to put some things out there that are good for all of our employees.
Got it.
Um, uh, a, a couple of questions is can you roll over, if you currently, uh, participate in the deferred comp program, can you roll those funds over into this program?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's, that's a bit of a challenge for some. Um, the, if I heard you correctly, this program is a reimbursement program. So if you pay an insurance premium of eleven hundred fifty dollars a month in retirement, you have to pay that and then seek reimbursement back out of this program?
Yeah, in general, yes.
I see that as a bit of a challenge for some higher bills, but I guess correct parts.
Let's, well, let's ask the questions through the chair and then you'll have an opportunity to come in. Only just to keep it easier for, uh, what's going on on the live stream too.
Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you, appreciate that. Um, I think it needs to be clear too, what happens, um, when somebody leaves pre-retirement. It sounds like it, it's their, it's their money that goes with them when they leave, so I think that was answered. Um, I'd like, uh, some discussion on what the fees are for Mission Square out of this program. How do they make their money? Because obviously they're not here, um, to just provide the service without making money on it. And then, um, the paid premiums prior to retirement, do those qualify? So if, if I haven't retired yet, but I'm already paying into a program for the long-term care that Supervisor Boone brought up, uh, that doesn't cover room and board, but I'm paying into a program that would cover room and board, if I've already started in that program when I was forty-five years old, does that qualify? You know, when I get into retirement and want to start seeking reimbursement for that, those premiums that I'm paying in the program? And then I'll ask your board to flip to the last page. Um, I understand that this, this is just, um, a, uh-
Study, sir.
You know, a, a presentation where there's different hypotheticals that could take place. But if you, if you kind of go down to the bottom right corner, it says mandatory employee compensation. I know that this is just a sample and it's not a hard fast, it has to be negotiated. But those are going to be some big hurdles to overcome. Twenty-five percent of all salary increases from compensation going forward. Three percent of salary once the employee reaches age forty, three percent of salary for the employee with ten or more years of service, two percent of salary for employees hired before whatever the given years. I'll repeat, I understand that those are negotiated terms. But those are some significant hurdles, if that's part of this program, where an employee is going to give up twenty-five percent of a future raise and three percent of their salary once they, you know, made it over ten years, et cetera. So I like the concept. So I want to put that out there and I hope your board supports at least continuing to study this. Um, but there's some, there's some hurdles. The other thing that I think would be helpful for your board is to bring this back and see what our current retirees are in the county, and Eric can do all this because he did it for me two months ago. Um, what our current number of retirees are and how much each of them pay into the program in retirement. Because as I repeated at the podium, a, a couple of meetings ago, is people retire at different levels and different salaries, but when you get into the retirement program, if it's you and your spouse, there's a flat rate of what you're paying, and it's about eleven hundred and fifty dollars a month right now for you and your spouse in retirement. Um, somebody that retires at my salary, I can afford that, but somebody who retires at, you know, a public work salary that's doing building maintenance, um, eleven hundred fifty dollars means they're going out and getting another job. And so I think it would be helpful for this board to put out publicly what our current retirement situation looks like, number of employees and, and what levels those employees are paying into this program. And I still like my idea better that I submitted to the committee.
Hey Sheriff, Sheriff, real quick, uh, it's on the mandatory, um, what you just pointed out on, on this last page. Uh, one of the scenarios here, it's, it's, uh, say you're a sheriff deputy. Um, you negotiate at ten years, you get a three percent longevity play, longevity pay. So now you earn that, but there, if you're in this program, it's mandated that you give up that three percent increase.
Which is also negotiable, I, and I get that, and I understood that from the presentation.
These aren't hard numbers.
These aren't hard numbers, it can all be negotiated. I just, you know, there's, there's some dollar amounts that are going to be hurdles going through negotiations where you're going to give some to get up some, and, and it's, you know, it's a big, it's a big hurdle, but I like the concept. I like the concept and I don't want to see this board just kick it down the curb because I do think it's a great, um, platform to get the discussion going, because we do need to do something in retirement for our employees. We just absolutely have to, because I, I have seen many of my employees who retire and they go right into another job because they need to pay for the health insurance premiums.
Thank you. And so Sheriff has some questions on the record, the gentleman or Carolyn, you guys want to address those?
I would like to, yes, mention that the mandatory, um, sheet that was given or the handout was just kind of samples of what you could negotiate. Um, I too agree with the sheriff that when we were looking at percentages off of salaries, that is kind of a, a big ask of employees, um, depending on the different bargaining groups we might be bargaining with. But, you know, when you look at the ideas of using sick leave, uh, banks, banks or vacation banks and getting creative with how you come up with different formulas, maybe the way we go in order to, uh, make it, you know, you know, save your banks then, so this can, you know, help you for your future. Um, so, um, those are some of the things on that fee.
Carolyn, when you say negotiate, those terms are negotiated, bargaining groups negotiate with the county or the county negotiating with, uh, Vanguard?
No, we would, uh, so the Vanguard program would be existing, um, basically using our current deferred comp plan. And we do have a deferred compensation, um, committee right now, the advisory committee, who meets, um, what is it? Pretty much every two to three months, who goes over the funds and makes sure that we're keeping our rates low, um, as far as the, um, fees that go along with all of our current deferred comp. This would just be tied into that, and if I'm wrong?
We would look to mirror the investments, correct, on the corporate seven plan.
Um, and as far as the, um, uh, I, I went like, sorry, I just have a moment, I, I do that these days anymore. Um, I apologize, but, um, we were asking about, I forget, sorry.
Sheriff had a question on a paid premiums and if they qualify to be moved into other programs that, that, that an individual might already have.
Okay, so it's actually a really good question, so there can be, okay, so there can be an age at which the funds are available to active employees. Um, it's no earlier than fifty or fifty-five, I apologize, it's like fifty or fifty-five. Um, so in the example, if somebody's forty-five years old and they're still working, they would not be eligible to pay for the long-term care premiums, I believe was the example given. Um, you know, if I'm a fifty-seven-year-old deputy and, you know, there's like, say, funds can be available at fifty-five for these out-of-pocket costs, then the answer is yes, I could use it to pay for my long-term care premiums. The one thing that, and this is a Mission Square policy, to be very forthright, is we do not want this, or we cannot allow this to be that flexible spending account. We don't want to compete with the county's flexible spending account, because the program is not designed for that. And candidly, if we allowed it to become a flexible spending account, it would push the costs up for everybody. So there are age, we, we can put age eligibility for active employees, but again, you had asked a little bit earlier, it's going to be that closer to retirement age. It's not going to be a forty-five, it's going to be more of a fifty-five or something of that nature.
Okay, and then can you talk a little bit about the model of how Mission Square gets their fees or what the fee is?
So, so there is obviously a degree of negotiation there, but in essence, the, the program, there's two fees, there's the investment fees. So if you look at the different funds and the different investments, your, you know, the fee is going to be whatever the S and P five hundred charges for argument's sake. And then over, and then in addition to that, uh, Mission Square Retirement, we'll, we will collect some type of administrative fee. And, and again, that would be negotiable at this point, I don't know what it would be candidly off the top of my head. Um, but that, it's the two fees, the investment fee plus the, uh, administrative fee, we'll call it.
Okay. Thank you. Carolyn, you have anything else?
Uh, no, I don't think, um, were there any other questions that we missed, Sheriff, that you still?
Are there going to be, uh, any other options or models like this to consider? Um, for the board makes the ultimate decision, uh, for example, whatever the sheriff, uh, may have turned in, um, how does, how does that work its way to the board?
So the one that those, was submitted to the, um, uh, the health insurance advisory committee, that one is one that, um, the, all the unions are, um, basically invited to that, so if they want to make a proposal to the county, they could. Um, and so I made that clear to them at that, uh, meeting, that it would require them to bring that to the, um, to us to negotiate. Um, and so far I haven't heard from any of them regarding that, um, uh, offer. The, um, and I did mention to all of them that this was something that we were going to be doing as part of a, um, a study session, so I encourage them to come to this one as well, so they can hear it. This came about, um, probably, um, a year and a half ago, I think it was presented when I first, um, joined the, um, uh, deferred comp, uh, program, uh, or the advisory committee. And, um, I'll be honest, when I first heard it, I was just barely learning deferred comp, so it was just a lot. And then I brought it up again and said, can we talk about it again and bring it back? And, um, I want to understand a little bit more now that I understand, I hear everybody talking about retiree health, you know, and that cost and what it does. And, you know, with the flex plan, the flex plan's only available while you're here every fiscal year. So, um, once I got a little bit more information and we came back, um, I brought it to the board and you guys said, let's, let's do a study session so we can get a little bit more detail. Because I think, you know, hearing it from me is one thing, but hearing it from Sean, who really understands the program and the benefit it offers, it's good. What I like about this again is it's, it's meet and confer, so we don't impose anything on anybody. It's about really conversations at the table about what works for that bargaining group.
So you're going to, sorry, supervisor?
This is, you can choose this if you choose to do so. It's not going to be forced on any bargaining group. So if a bargaining group decides to go this direction, it's available to their personnel underneath them, correct?
The, the county would have to agree to sponsor, be the sponsor of the program.
But it's up to the individual employee to choose if he wants to be part of it.
Correct.
Right?
Uh, not the individual, no, it's the bargaining group. So the associations would have to meet and confer on it as a collective bargaining group.
Yeah, so I, I would say, give, uh, Carolyn direction to bring it back to the bargaining and discuss it amongst themselves, let them play with a couple of models and then bring it back to us.
Yeah, because, um, counsel, I know it's just a study session, but what's the difference that, um, I'm thinking about like so-source and bidding, um, models that, let's say, if today the board was going to vote and say, we wanted, uh, Mission Square to provide the service to the county, could we do that or we couldn't do that because we'd have to go out to a bid or open it up versus so-source?
That's a question that's been running through my mind throughout this discussion, and I probably want to research to determine whether or not we would have to go out to bid or whether it would be justified by a so-source, given that it could closely mirror and piggyback on the deferred comp plan. So I'm apologize, I don't have an answer to that question right now.
Okay, no, it's okay, you'll get back to it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you, counsel.
Yeah, I think for every individual, it's different. I know up on the board for myself, it doesn't work for me, but it may work for somebody else. So I think it needs to be, uh, looked into and then brought back.
Thank you. Um, any other department heads, I'm seeing an IT director, Ms. Devlin, come on up, Ms. Devlin.
Uh, John Devlin, um, I actually retired from another public agency, as some of you may recall. And, uh, when they first introduced it, it was fire and management only, and it was to take twenty-five percent of the sick leave on retirement. And a lot of employees thought, oh, they're taking my money because it was just paid out to them. However, in my case, in retrospect, I wish they would have taken much more of it because that, that money that you think you're going to get, Uncle Sam took almost all of it.
Right.
So it was a big detriment. So in retrospect, I really wish they had put more money from that sick leave payout into a program like this because it would help, uh, after retirement, especially with all the tax advantages, um, as opposed to getting that wallop from Uncle Sam. You, you really don't see that much money, and I think, um, when they're negotiating with the bargaining units, they should try to show, based on your tax bracket, what you're not going to get when you, uh, retire from a sick leave payout or vacation payout.
Thank you.
Got it, sir.
Anybody else?
Sheriff.
No worries. My, uh, former undersheriff was texting me, he's like, hey, just as an example, he retired at twenty-seven hundred hours of sick leave. And you're, because he started before January first nineteen ninety-nine, he was allowed to roll over percent of that into his health insurance premium fund, which gets him about seven and a half years, um, of premium, but it doesn't quite get him to sixty-five, just, he wanted me to share that as an example. And then he's going to be using his deferred comp- And then he's going to be using his deferred comp to pay the health insurance premiums after that. So interesting, you know, I submitted my, my proposal, my idea to the health insurance committee. I was part of that committee under the original terms, and so I didn't realize I could have just brought it to the board for a platform issue to have the board give direction on, but knowing that now, I like it. And, and so I, I agree with having the, the health insurance committee take a look at it and the bargaining units take a look at it. But don't forget, you have one bargaining unit that doesn't have a bargaining unit, and that's unrepresented management. And so there's no bargaining unit to bargain with, with unrepresented management. We, we simply just get called into a room and told like, hey, here's what's coming down the pipe for you. And so that, that's one group that doesn't have a group. So just, I'm going to put that on your radar because if you send this to the, you know, the committee to, to talk about, like, whether or not they like this or not, that's, the unrepresented management doesn't have to, so just wanted.
Yeah, thank you. So, you know, I don't like anybody counting my money. And I, I assume most people that work for the county don't want me counting their money and telling them what to do with it. So I think it's an individual choice. So I'm very careful what, what people, what I do with other people's money.
Yeah, and I, I do think, you know, and I'm not sure if the board's aware or how the retirement works around here. You know, you can build sick time and you can roll certain percentages of sick time into your, into your bank to, to use towards your health insurance premium retirement. But if you were hired after January first nineteen ninety-nine, that drops a little bit. You don't get the same benefit. And so it's one thing that I think we should take a look at and fix. We have a lot of great employees that started, Chuck, I don't know if Chuck's in the room or online, he's, he's a perfect example. I think he started like January fifth nineteen ninety-nine, so he missed the deadline. So his benefit drops even though he's been a long-term employee here. Those are the things that we really need to start looking at and to, to try to take, take a hard look at and fix, you know, because we have a lot of great employees that started after January first nineteen ninety-nine, but their benefit drops. And so we value their, their work, but their benefit drops because they started after a certain arbitrary date, which probably doesn't make any sense to any of us at this point. So, thank you.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Thanks, Ken, very informative. And, I mean, based on that, I don't know how the board feels. I guess we get to the board for direction, but would you guys like to see another option, like the sheriff's option work its way to the board for presentation?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Two?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to move forward as discussed. Bring the sheriff's option in and let HR talk to the parties involved and bring it back to us again for another discussion. I don't want to make a decision right yet.
Yeah.
I think we've got sixteen hundred and some employees and everybody, everybody's individual and their, their need to be met. And if they want to opt out, they should have that option as well.
Um, just to get clarification, and I'm going to like to count and counsel on this one, but I'm assuming that any further discussions on this one would be through closed session and discussions behind closed doors.
Well, I think.
In terms of like direction on the.
I think we need to get feedback from the employees first.
Well, if the bargaining groups are interested, then I would meet with them, and if they give me a proposal, then I would bring it back to you guys for the session.
All right.
Does that make sense?
If there's an active proposal, then it would come into closed session. If it's just a general discussion about options that are available and it's not actively being bargained, then it could be done in open session.
Yeah, I think that part of Supervisor Boon's motion needs to be clarified that. Sue, does your motion, meaning just Carolyn, to start a conversation but not close the window on another plan?
Exactly. I want to hear, I want, I want, now this, this is out there. The employees are going to talk to HR, they're going to tell them what they like or don't like it. And then the sheriff has another plan out there that may work or may not work, but let's hear what he has to say. And unrepresented management is another concern, too. I don't want to tell people what to do. So I just think, start the conversation. We'll have another study session here in a month or two, and we can give direction at that point.
Yes, because, because reality is, and some things we don't think about, or I don't know, I know I don't, but to hear when the sheriff came and read the text about a, a retired deputy who's now got to use their, their deferred compensation money to pay for a healthcare premium, I mean, that's a little bit scary. I might be naive to the reality of it, but I was hopeful that when that time came for me, that my deferred comp money that I look at all the time, that, that's, man, at least you can go wine tasting or something in retirement with it. Go get a good meal.
You can still go wine tasting, it's just box.
Health premium. Yeah, box wine, alrighty. But no, that, use that money for your healthcare premium, I mean, that's reality there. And so I think that would pique interest of our employees, our department heads, us to find something that's good and moving forward and at least have some kind of resource.
I'm not comfortable with telling people what to do with their retirement, so I think it's, get it out there, it's out there now, we're talking about it. Let's get some feedback and see what the people want to, the employees want to see.
Yeah, and you're right, there are some good ten-dollar bottles of wine out there. That'd be a four-hundred-dollar bottle.
Box.
Box, yeah, maybe some box. Okay. Hey, good conversation. Appreciate everyone who helped.
Do we need a, a motion or a vote or anything?
Well, we had your, we had your motion fine-tuned. That's just for direction, I think, the board, the board.
And we're all good with that?
Yeah, we polled everybody on the direction.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board member announcements. We'll start with Sue Neves.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Yeah, I attended an online class on opioid crisis. I've been going to these for, seemed like forever. This one kind of dealt with veterans and kind of contrasted and, and compared the tele, tele treatments versus in-person. And I think the community might be getting a little bit easier to the telehealth, tele-therapy type systems because they're seeing a little bit more success on that side of it. Continue to appear at Santa Claus, Hanford Lion's Breakfast was a nice event, a little more Christmas parade, and Sierra Pacific Band last night was very nice. Then yesterday, the Kings County Behavioral Health Advisory Board also met. We reviewed the two thousand twenty-three Kings County data notebook that stays a year behind. And I think that'll be coming to the board for, just to look at it before it gets submitted to the state and also look at the bylaws, as well as the department updates in the Kings County Behavioral Health. So with that, thank you very much, Ms. Chair.
Good job, sir.
You're good.
Supervisor.
I left with even went to an open house for our Senator Hurtado and me more, been about an hour there. Then on Thursday morning, Highspeed Rail had a patient planning meeting, first one for the King Flurry Station. So we had about an hour and a half meeting on that one. And then also last night, Vista Consulting had a meet and greet and the first Christmas party of the year for me. And then yesterday, Vice President Robinson and myself met with the mayor of Hanford and Mark Iris, council member, to discuss some homeless issues. Thank you.
Lord, Sue Robinson, morning.
Last Wednesday and Thursday, I had an airborne study session in Desto. They were displaying also some of the new low dust emission vehicles for walnut harvesting and almond, almond harvesting. In some cases, they'll reduce dust emissions by eighty percent. So it was a nice display. Everyone from the Assemblymen and several other representatives were there to, to see the, the new harvesters. Then we had a study session after that. And a lot of good work at the airboard in terms of mitigation with these, these air standards and so forth. We just achieved another milestone in terms of NOx, I believe, eliminated eleven thousand tons a day of NOx, which is nitrogen oxide. The problem is, well, the agencies were there, CARB, California Air Resource Board, Public Utilities Commission, Department of Energy. And though we're doing this good work, we need flexibility. For example, on January first, they're going to pass some regulations where sixteen thousand cars, I'm sorry, trucks, I, I'm not sure if it's level three or level four, won't be able to, to drive on California roads anymore because of, of some of the inflexibility with these laws. Or if you go to the whole state, three hundred and twenty-three thousand vehicles. So I made that point to them. The point was made several times to them. We'll, we'll see what they do. Yesterday, as Supervisor Verboon said, also met with the mayor and vice mayor to discuss homeless issues and some of the interim issues until we get more permanent solutions. And so just keep working on that. Thank you.
Good work, good work. I think at this time, everyone already heard about the hospital in Corcoran yesterday, the structure, fire going down, so just want to thank the firefighters who came from all over, right chief, all over the county. I'm sure it was a very exhausting day for them, so we want to thank those, those firefighters for doing the job that they did yesterday, and hopefully everyone is safe from that. Everyone, everyone came out okay, all, all the firefighters, chief?
Yeah, we, Ms. Chairman, Bill Lynch, Kings County Fire, we had Corcoran State Prison, we had Flurry County, we had, of course, ours, Kings County there, and it was still under investigation. We're not sure what, what's going on, but the building portion was abandoned, so the hospital wasn't using it, but everybody's fine. Everybody came out of it. No, no loss of life, no, nothing, just, just building damage.
Good, good work. Thank, thank you, chief. And on a lighter note, for anyone who hasn't been to the Fox Theater lately with the vintage movies that are being played, it's, I just want to commend them on a good time that they put out and took the family on Saturday to see Home Alone on the big screen, and Lions Club was up. I saw Lions Club members vested up, and the Snag Bar is a five-dollar hot dog, which was real good, and five-dollar nachos and some refreshments, but there's a lot of people there. And it was, I haven't done that in years. That was a good time to go see the old movie in the Fox. Good experience. So with that, I'll turn over to C A L.
The board received a notice from the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board for a meeting that will take place on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three at nine a.m. For upcoming events, the Kings County Library will host its fourteenth annual winter open house this Wednesday, December sixth, from four to six, at the Hanford Branch Library. Corcoran will host its one hundred and fourth annual Christmas parade this, on December seventh. And Kings United Way will host its Christmas charity event on December seventh as well, at six p.m. at the Hanford Civic. The Venice Health will be doing their light-up tree lighting ceremony on December twelfth at six p.m. And lastly, Kings County Child Sports Services is still collecting socks for their slipper sock drive, and donations can be dropped off until December fourteenth. For upcoming agenda items, the following agenda items are for December twelfth. Administration has five items, two items in conjunction with board supervisors on the canceled board dates for two thousand twenty-four, an amendment to a tolling agreement with Department, California Department of Water Resources, public safety alignment plan, and public facilities impact the annual report study session. County Council has an item regarding the renewal of the local emergency due to flood conditions in Kings County. District Attorney has an item on a personnel rule. Health has items regarding the care program for Children and Foster Care Plan and budget, and some SB thirteen eighty-three local assistance grant application. Human Resources has personal appeals board appointment, and Trump every Smith Solutions Countywide Recruitment Contract. And Human Services has an item for transitional housing program, round five, and housing navigation and maintenance program, round two, application. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll go to German. We meet a week from today, same place, same time, and the board is back here at eleven a.m. today for the California Public Finance Authority regular board meeting. Thank you, everybody.